25th, note that we do have a quorum and we have two items on our agenda. The first being approval of the minutes, licensing board regular meeting minutes from July 11th. If we can have a motion from one of you two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, it's been motion second and any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And under agenda items for consideration, number two, we have extension of premise for Copper River Bar and Grill at 111 North Main Street, Suite 104, to include a patio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, it's a motion second and any comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for licensing board, adjourned by the call of the chair, we're just going to give a couple of minutes here in case there's any other guests that would like to join us. And good evening once again, like to call to order the city of West Bend Common Council meeting for July 25th, note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present accounted for, please join me to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we have 14 items on our agenda, the first being the common council regular meeting minutes from July 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, panel and Allen, any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll start it off with our presentations, first being the oath of office for Detective Brock and Bateman. It sounds like a detective name. Brock Bateman. Are two people. Brock and Bateman.
Alright, so raise your red hands and then we can get it for me. I Brock and Bateman.
I Brock and Bateman.
Have been appointed as detective.
Has been appointed by the, as detective.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the constitution, constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Good evening, like officials, Mr. Mayor, council, and most importantly, the community of West Bend, thank you for giving us the time to recognize and more importantly, celebrate our latest promotion of Officer Brock Bateman, last time I'll say that, to Detective Brock Bateman. So Brock joined our department in 2017, he's been here about five and a half years. As I prepared for some comments tonight, I reviewed his background information when he initially got hired, and Brock stated he had three long-term goals. One was to get involved in enforcement of alcohol and narcotics violations. One was to join the SWAT team, and one was to seek out a career in investigations. So Brock is a D R V, a drug recognition expert, and has been one of our experts in OWI enforcement, which he used as a FTO, one of our most valued FTOs on our late shift, teaching our young officers about the importance of OWI enforcement, so check one on that goal. Two, we wanted to join the SWAT team, Brock's been a member of our special response SWAT team, check two, and tonight we admit that third goal of joining our investigative ranks. So I really appreciate all the hard work you did, and to your family, I'll say to his wife Megan and their two beautiful twins, Blake and Blair, congratulations, and he's done really well. And to Brock, I'll say, time to set some new goals. As our tradition continues, we're going to have Brock's father Brad pin on his badge. The significance of the family, we stole this from the fire department, is really to, it used to be the chief pinned on the badge, and now we've recognized. The importance of family, family keeping our officers healthy, keeping our officers whole, and being full, really deep and wide people, right? This job has a tendency to make us very much focused on our careers, and it's up to his lovely family, all of you, to make sure that he is a bigger person than just a police officer, so he's helping when he comes here to protect and serve.
Thank you, and congratulations once again. And we'll move on to, we have three resolutions honoring members of our fire department, the first being the Fire Battalion Chief Mark Forster for 25 years of service. If we can, thank you, yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Berquist, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This resolution, so reads, whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others, and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas, Mark Forster has been a great asset to the fire department throughout his 25 years of service with the city of West Bend, he was hired as a full-time employee on July 7th, 1997. His experience grew in the department, leading him to various roles. He was promoted to motor pump operator in 2000, lieutenant paramedic in 2008, and battalion chief in 2021. Whereas during his career as a firefighter, Mark Forster obtained his associate degree from Waukesha Technical College, bachelor's degree from University of St. Thomas, and is currently enrolled at Grand Canyon for a master's degree in public administration program. Therefore be resolved, the city of West Bend honors Battalion Chief Mark Forster and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. Let's give him a round of applause. Any wise words, sir, you got for us?
Uh, no wise words, I've truly enjoyed my 25 years working for the city, it's been a, um, it hasn't felt like a job for 25 years, so I enjoy coming to work, I still do, and hope to work a few more.
Awesome, thank you so much. Next up, we have a resolution honoring Fire Lieutenant Paramedic Robert Hassy for 25 years of service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that to Allen and Dolnick, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this resolution, so reads, whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others, and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas, Robert Hassy began his service with the West Bend Fire Department in July 1997 as a firefighter, in January 2001, he became an MPO, was then promoted to lieutenant paramedic in November 2018. Whereas, Robert Hassy leads by example with always having a hard work attitude and willingness to take on any job. His ability to make people laugh and smile makes him a pleasure to have at the firehouse. Therefore be resolved, the city of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant Paramedic Robert Hassy and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. Let's give him a round of applause.
I was told there'd be no speech today, I was not told to have a speech ready, I'll hopefully have one ready in a few years at retirement.
Sounds great, thanks, sir. And last but certainly not least, resolution honoring Fire Captain Training Officer Robert Monday for his 25 years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Berquist, all those in favor, so it'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this one, so reads, whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others, and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas, Robert Monday began his service with the West Bend Fire Department in July 1997 as a firefighter, in January 2002, he became an MPO, was then promoted to captain training officer in November of 2017. Whereas Robert Monday trains our new members up to the fire, sorry, the West Bend fire rescue standards, refreshes and updates our members to the current and ever-changing standards as well. Therefore be resolved, the city of West Bend honors Fire Captain Training Officer Robert Monday and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. Give him a round of applause as well. I know you're bound to have some great comments for us, right?
No, no great comments. It's just been a pleasure serving the people of this city, so thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to say on behalf of the fire department to these gentlemen, thank you very much for your 25 years, you guys are outstanding firefighters, you've led by example throughout your career, you've accomplished your goals like Tim Durian was saying, check, check, check. Not only are you great firefighters, but you're great men as well, you lead in the community, you're coaches, you're great dads, so thank you for your example, and they all guaranteed me they have 10 more years yet, so.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you to all our family, friends, and loved ones for coming as well, you're welcome to stay for an exciting night if you would like. Otherwise, I'm going to recess the common council to public works.
Okay, and we'd like to call the order, the board of public works, we have two items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes of June 20th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, a presentation by county chief public works officer Scott Schmidt of the city of West Bend's transportation network sustainability plan. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see in front of you a document, that's the 2050 plan for the city of West Bend, that the Washington County Highway Department along with our IT department, our GIS department, and of course, city staff, that worked hard to create this document for you and for the citizens of the city of West Bend. I'm just going to pop this open quick. I'll grab this up. But one thing I want to point out is we'll kind of run through this relatively quickly, and certainly if you have questions along the way, it can help that out. That's what happened, sorry, my thumb drive got bumped out, we're getting ready to get into it now. So, well, we'll start off as, so 2050 plans, we did look at the roadways for the city of West Bend, going out to year actually 2052, but putting 2052 on the counter doesn't, on the top page, doesn't look as brilliant as bright as 2050, but the plan does go out to 2052, so roughly a 30-year plan. So you see table of contents, also that was handed out tonight was a two-page kind of executive summary, so you see that really condenses down the data, if you wanted to share that with constituents and other people that you can share this with, and give them the kind of the Cliff Notes version. So, we won't go through it page by page and part by part, but kind of hit the highlights of items that we did and took care of. So, the first thing we did was obviously had to get a street inventory of where all the streets are in the city of West Bend, as well as their Pazer rating. And I can't emphasize enough what a Pazer rating is, is that the rating of a roadway when it's first constructed is basically a 10. If you imagine a Pazer of 10 goes down to a Pazer of zero once it uses its end of life, right? So think about, 10 is a perfect road, a zero is basically back to gravel, and all the way in between. So if you look on page five of your report, and it's taking a little bit of time to load up here, is, there's a little chart there, this is the city of West Bend Pazer summaries of 2050 to 2021, excuse me. And if you look at the bottom of that, what I really want to point out is that the roadways that are in poor, very poor condition, that's that Pazer of three or Pazer of two that we're looking at. And you'll see that of about 14 and a half miles in Pazer three, and about six miles in Pazer two. It's roughly 20 miles that are in very poor condition here in city of West Bend, and it goes about 11 and four, roughly 15% of your roadways are in that Pazer state right now. And so, I'm not sure why this isn't loading, I'll try another one. And so, oof, it did not like that. I'll try the Word document instead, and see if we can get past page four on that one. There we go. So you see up on the screen here, this is where I'm talking about, that table one on page five, and you see about 11% are in condition three and 4% in condition two. Just kind of as a rough comparison, we do have the data for the city of Hartford, and they have 1.3% of their roads in those two states, and the village of Kewaskom has 22% of their roadways in that state. So, just kind of give you a percentage, so the Hartford mileage is 3.8 miles, and the Kewaskom's mileage is about 2.4 miles. So, when you kind of look at it from percentage basis and then look at a mileage, so quite a few of your roadways are down there. And you'll see the bottom of that chart where it says 134 miles, we did this chart before, we had the six miles of alleys in there too. So, you'll see me often refer to later on of 140 miles of roadway, and we'll get those alleys in here, but this is basically your roadway network system, not including your six miles of alleys in it. The next page is, got figure one, kind of shows your deterioration rate over time, right? That if you look at it, your road started off at a 10, and gradually over time, they start failing and down to the fours and threes. And we put a best fit curve in there, and we're actually working with the state of Wisconsin to more finalize and refine this data. We've got 27,000 points, you can imagine every roadway gets Pazer rated every other year, it goes back to 2003, and there's different segments of roadways. So you imagine a segment roadway might be a city block, maybe two city blocks. So you can imagine taking all your ways and blocking them off into one block, then getting data for the last 20 years, it's a lot of data points, so we're working that out too. But this is roughly what that curve looks like, is that it deteriorates pretty quickly and then kind of levels out, and we'll talk about why your curve kind of looks like that versus what the state typical curve looks like on roadways. But we gather that information because a question's going to come up, if we do this in 30 years, we get these roads done, what roads are going to be in that shape in 20 years or 30 years? And that's really what we want to find out too, going, well, you might be able to get rid of your condition state two or three roads, but then more threes are coming down the road, and how quickly are those going to be coming? And is what we're doing enough, that's what we're working with, that, and hopefully by the end of this week, next week, we'll have that completed for the city of West Bend, again, working with the state of Wisconsin to gather up that data. You look at the next map, and that's kind of the red, yellow, green, red meaning it's poor, yellow fair, green is good, because like your traffic signals. And so you can see the amount of red that's on that particular map, the yellow, excuse me, the orange and the green, to kind of give you a feel for where those roadways are in the community. And of course, this is a rough sketch, and we can zoom in there and zoom out, and we can go through the application that's behind this as well, but that kind of gives you a feel for where those roads are. And that Pazer rating is done by either city staff or, I believe, county engineering did it last time, correct? So it's a Pazer rating that you do locally and give it to the state of Wisconsin, it's not the state coming in looking at your roads, it's not the county looking at your roads, it's kind of self-reporting your condition of the roadway and what they looked at. The next thing we looked at was not just the condition road, but then seeing what kind of traffic volumes are on those particular roadways. So you see map three has where your higher traffic volume roads are, and lower traffic road volumes are within the city of West Bend. And what we're doing is we're using that data to determine which roadway should you actually be repaving, right? So, the next thing we looked at is all your utilities, it's very important to make sure we're connecting the roadways with the utilities, because often you want to do them both simultaneously, what the city of West Bend does quite well when they're doing their roadways. So map four kind of shows you the age of your utilities in the city of West Bend, again, green being zero to 30, and then the red as you go down is 71 to 110 years old, which obviously makes sense, if you look at the map, right? The central part of the city, the old, if you will, part of the city is red, it goes a little bit more, turns kind of that yellowish and orange, and you go out to the newer, outer limits, it turns green, right? So you're looking at the map kind of that way going, well, obviously the older infrastructure is in the older part of the city. So we took that into account, talking to the water and sewer utilities, again, I'm not going to go through these, so we asked them, where are your areas of concern within the city too? So, the water utility on map five said, these are areas of either we have a capacity issue, or we have a lot of problems, a lot of breaks, right? And it's important if you, if you've got an air road that's going bad, well, do you want to do a road that's, you know, doesn't have any utility problems underneath, or one that has utility problems? It saves you money if you do the utility problems first, right? Because what you want to do is get those roads done so your utility companies aren't constantly replacing and repairing the roadway and the watermen underneath. So, we talked to the water utility, and then you'll see that on map six, we talked to the sanitary sewer utility as well, to see what issues they may have had. Then we next, we looked at planning considerations, going, well, you got a lot of road network in there, hopefully a lot of development going on in the city of West Bend in the past and in the future. And map seven shows where do you think you're going to have to either widen the roadway, you're doing, you know, 18th Avenue, South Main Street, you know, is coming up in the future, potentially that Trenton Road extension, so looking at where roads might have to be expanded in the future. And so we took all that stuff and put in this nice GIS program and IT program that we created as a county's application, and you'll see on figure two kind of your typical lifecycle, where the city of West Bend was more concave down, this kind of levels out and then drops down, and that's where we're looking at what the city of West Bend's pavement lifecycle is versus what might be the statewide average of the pavement lifecycle. So we got that worked out right now. And to point out in the middle of that page, the city of West Bend spends about, and I say about because it's not an exact number, about $2 million annually on pavement and pavement maintenance. And it's a key component here as we move forward, is right underneath there, you'll see a quick spreadsheet, about 433,000 is spent on maintenance of that 2 million, so that means they only use about 1.6 for actually roadway construction or repaving of your roadways in your community. So, you also see in that list of maintenance expenses, you don't see seal coating, chip sealing, that kind of stuff on there. You'll see paint markings, right? Crack filling, the cracks in the roadway getting filled, permit reimbursements and Mastik, which is a great tool, the county uses it as well, to fill in those divots in low areas in your roadway and build those up. But what's not on there is a roadway maintenance program. If you look at, is the way the curve is going like that, because once you put a roadway in, if you don't put a, think about your asphalt driveways, anybody have, I don't know if anyone here has an asphalt driveway, typically speaking, at some point, you're going to seal coat that driveway, right? And then you're going to wait a couple of years, the sun's going to fade it out, and what are you going to do again? You're going to put a seal coat on it. What you're doing is you're trying to extend the life of that asphalt. And the county does that by chip sealing, it's in our, most of our roadways in our rural area, we'll put on a layer of asphalt demolition, put some stones on top of it, and it's a chip seal, and that protects that sun from drying it out, right? And that asphalt leaving it, because when asphalt goes down, it's black, and if you wait a couple of years, it turns gray. And you wait a couple more years, it starts to actually ravel, if you look at it, right? The salt gets into it a little bit, and the sun bakes on it, right, it starts raveling a little bit. So, it's very important that you're using that money and getting through a proper maintenance program. The county undertook just under 20 miles of chip sealing this past spring on our county highways to make sure that those roadways are staying in good shape. So, the next thing we did is we got project costs, and these project costs are dedicated right to the city, we got them right from the city, so their asphalt costs and sewer costs and alley costs are right from the city. We actually did those based on your bids that came in this spring, so these are our fresh, good, true and accurate numbers, and encompass all of the project, right? From the engineering to the inspection, design, the actual installation, so project basically from start to finish, right? Not just construction dollars, but how to get a project from beginning to actual end, so you'll see that in there. We took all that data, all the sewer, all the water, all the traffic volumes, and took it into and put it into this GIS application in analysis. And what that did was, it created a kind of a hierarchy of the roadways, right, going, we're going to do your worst roads first, but if I got two roads that are both a three, I'm going to look to see which one's got more traffic volume and do that one first. I'm going to look to see which one maybe has a utility problem, I'm going to do that one first. I'm going to look at the age of the utility, if it's 100 years, or excuse me, 80 years or older, we're going to do that one first before one that's 40 years, and has 40 years utilities, right? So it's looking at all that stuff, data, using all that math behind the scenes to figure out which roadways should you do first, and which ones can you delay and do later on in the pavement lifecycle. So, they put all that data into there and spit out a great program, it looked like, and we can show you what the application looks like. And the city was online with that, it's amazing with the village of Kewaskom, city of West Bend, the first couple of roads that you guys had in your capital improvement plan were the first couple that popped up on that list. So, city staff's doing a great job of looking out the roadways, so it's great from our standpoint to go, yeah, look, that three out of the five were in that same realm, so that's great news from us, for us and the city. So, they looked at that, and we actually had to lock some roads up, so you'll see that on table three, and what that did was, if you're doing one city block, maybe you should do two at the same time, you could lock those two projects together, right? If the program said this one should be done in 2030, and that road should be done in 2032, let's just lock them together and do them both in 2030, right? We save money and time and don't upset the citizens two years apart. So, we took a look at that, we also, the city had some hes, and thankfully got some funding for several of their projects, we locked those in the year we knew the funding was going to be available to the cities, we locked in road projects too by the year, because you knew funding was, you know, excuse me, funding's coming for those projects. So we threw it into this magical program, and then again, I'm highlight number three, put that $2 million in there, again, we should have taken out the 433, but it's the full 2 million, and we'll get that addressed in the next plan. But if two, all 2 million went just to roads, and then again, we put a million for sewer and a million for water going forward. The other thing that the program called for was, are we carrying the money forward? That means you've borrowed $2 million and you only used 1.9 million, that extra 100,000, just going to carry that forward and use it in the next following year, that was one of the decisions. We also have inflation rate, we did this with the county's plan, we started it several years ago, we use a 2.9% rate, and that's also, you can adjust that in the plan, so if you don't like 2.9, you want to add, put in seven or eight, you can put that rate in the plan and adjust it accordingly, but we use 2.9% for what you see right here. And you can adjust that, do you want to adjust inflation rate for how much money you're putting into the plan? Do you want to adjust inflation rate for the cost of the construction projects? And what the city shows is, nope, the 2 million's constant, and that will be constant for, let's just say, the next 20 years, 2 million only. Well, you're only given 2 million, and your inflation keeps going up for construction costs, eventually you're not going to get as much done per year, because inflation's going to keep going up. So maybe the first year you get a mile done, by the time you get to that 30-year window, you're not getting a mile of pavement done anymore, because your inflation keeps going up and your 2 million keeps constant, but that's the way we ran the program at the city's request. We also looked at utilities and said, anything that's over 80 years old, we're going to consider replaced, if it's less than 80 and not as a problem, we're going to go ahead and leave that in place. And then next thing was alleys, they recommended doing two alleys per year, and we'll talk about how that impacts your plan later on. And then obviously the year range, and then the Pazer range as well, we selected the full Pazer range of one to 10, but you don't get to all the roads that are 10s. So table four kind of gives you the example of those results. You'll see that the roads that are scheduled in that 30-year window is about 10.9 miles of roadway, of your roughly 140 miles of roadway. So when you look at that going, that really doesn't work real well, you still have a bunch of Pazers, you have a half mile left of Pazer two ratings, you have about 13 and a half miles left of Pazer three ratings. Again, when you get down to there, that road's in pretty poor shape and probably not going to make it to full 30 years, once you get out there. But, but that's the numbers that came out of the program, again, when we take that 4,000 off, that goes exclusively to maintenance, that number drops down to about eight miles of roadway, you'll get done. I don't have that converted to a city block, but roadways. Next you'll see map eight, that shows your street improvement priority, that shows you all the roadways that you would get done in that 30 years, so that's looking a little bit better, there's a lot of color on that map, right? It maybe looked, you know, trim and jewelry, pretty dim on the table four, what you're able to get done, but once you look it out of the map, it, you're going to see what potentially get done, and you'll see they're kind of concentrated again near the central part of the city, where you have the older utilities, older roadways, kind of in that centralized area of the city. As well as some outliers like 18th Avenue and South Main Street, you'll see. You'll see on the south and southwest portion. And then I'm not going to go through all these maps, but we broke them out by the years, 2022 to 2025. And then appendix A has the actual roads listed. So if you're looking at the map and can't figure out, well, which roadway is it? You get onto appendix A, and it has the exact roads listed by year and when they're going to get done. So you don't have to look too closely at those maps. The first map kind of showed it all in general, and you can certainly take your time looking at those. But you can definitely see by the time you get out to those out years, you're not doing as many segments of roadways, because you're not adding funds in for inflation. And then table five lists out those roadways and all the money that's spent on asphalt, concrete, your alleys, the surface, that's, that adds up all of them. And I can't, when you stress this enough, is when you look at that table, the one thing that kind of jumped out to me is the city after that, you know, 30 years, $60 million, right? Because you're putting 2 million in it per year, and the extra change is because you're getting some money from the state, 77,000 every other year, and that's why it's not 60 million perfect. But that surface where you spent 60 million, roughly a third of it, or 17 million, a little less than a third, you're spending on your alleys by doing two a year. So just something to think about, right? When we talk about policy decisions later on, if you're doing that many alleys, you're spending about 40,000 or two-thirds on your roadways, and you're spending about a third of it on your alleys. Not saying that's wrong or right, I'm just making sure you're kind of pointing out that that's where you're, you're spending your money according to this plan. And then you'll see the money for the sewer, the water work, and other work as well. And the other is, like South Main Street, Max knows that that cost per foot isn't going to be really good, because you've got to widen that roadway out, right? And buy right away, right away, and all that kind of stuff. So that's why you see in that 2022 to 25 is, we bumped that number up. Now, you're also getting money from the state that year to help with that project. And I think you got some money already coming for design already, hopefully soon, soon, soon coming for design for that. So that's why you see that other is, if you know a project's coming up, that's going to be higher than expected cost, we can put that rate in there going, yep, we know this can be higher, so we better add some, some money into that. So table five kind of breaks it down by, by year, so you can see how much, again, at that 10.9 miles of roadway that you're looking at. So how do you fund this plan? Again, right now, the plan just shows $2 million of borrowing right now. Again, not accounting for inflation for the next, you know, 30 years. So we looked at, one thing the city's doing right now is borrowing about $3 million annually, and 2 million of it is dedicated to road maintenance and construction that you're looking at right now. Other sources of funding, I mentioned that LREP money, MSGT funding, that's currently 77,000 every other year. That's coming right from the state of Wisconsin. That certainly could go up, but when you look at the whole big issue, 77,000 per year doesn't get you a whole lot. If it goes up, it's not going to magically quadruple or something, maybe go to 90,000 and 100,000, right? Over time, but certainly something you can talk to your state assemblyman and representatives about that, that dollar amount that's in there. As you see with the governance rates, all the money going towards transportation, you know, why aren't those being funded a little bit higher? County takes advantage of that, and the locals do as well. The next one on the list is the surface transportation program. This is where the, the city anticipates getting funding, and DAS gotten funding for Eighteenth Avenue, hopefully again for South Main Street. Rusko Road was just recently approved, I believe, for funding as well. And so those funding sources are out there. The city's been taking advantage of that since its inception in 2013. The one thing to note is that the last census might change how that works. So we've taken advantage of the county, one of our, we had one project in that particular pot of money, the city's had several, and we're hoping that the census doesn't change those lines and boundaries and affects that negatively, which it could going forward. So we'll see how that works. Next possible source of funding you'll see listed as ARPA funds. The city has received ARPA funds, just like the county and every other municipality in the United States. So that's a possibility. Utility funds, and the city does take advantage of this, that when we're redoing a water main, the water utility pays for the road construction over the top of the water main. Same thing with the sewer. So you're, you're taking advantage of that opportunity right now. Options that are certainly out there to the city of West Bend is creating a stormwater utility is a possibility to help pay for, if you've got the utility paying for the sanitary sewer and paying for the water main, stormwater utility could pay for that storm sewer that's in that roadway that also gets done. I know one of your latest projects had a rather large storm sewer associated with it, and those can get quite, quite costly, especially when you're dealing with this area of the city that's very old, you have a lot of the old storm sewer too. If you're replacing the sewer, you're replacing the water, you're probably replacing the storm sewer too. So one thing to consider is a stormwater utility. I know the city has taken advantage of districts in the past, also potentially looking at downtown Main Street reconstruction. Now there, the utilities are only 40 years old, so if you, you know, can get away with it, you know, maybe not do the utilities in downtown, and just do a roadway rehab project down there, because you have a lot of the utilities that are, you know, well in that 90 to 100 years old going through there. And I'm sure it's something the city's engineering and public works will be looking at as they move that in any project forward. There are new infrastructure grants at the federal level that you may be eligible for. A lot of those go to disadvantaged areas, whether it's race or economic stuff. So that's something the, the city staff can certainly look at, that the, the federal grants are out there right now, and see if you have areas in the city that those would be applicable for. The city also retains and gets from the state general transportation aid, and utilize that for public works operations. The city does do special assessments, but that's certainly something you could look at to see, are you special assessing enough, too much? And how are you doing that special assessments? The state transportation, they have grants and aids. You'll see a list of three that the city has recently taken advantage of. So to show, again, that show that the city staff is doing their due diligence and checking these out and looking for that, those opportunities when they're out there. There's also the highway safety improvement, the CMAC grant, and also a state infrastructure bank to get some funding opportunities as well. It may be possible, again, highly slim for our senators right now, but federal earmarks are out there and something to, to talk about. We receive them for some, I think, body cams for our sheriff's department. So with any federal earmark, you have to have a willing, you know, senator or congressman, and then something they actually want, right? That's kind of on their wish list or what their kind of pet projects are going forward. A wheel tax is out there as an, as an option. I believe there's 32 cities, villages, and 13 counties that have taken advantage of creating a wheel tax in their community. There's a new one, a newer one called a transportation utility that's out there as well. That was actually shown to me by, by city staff here, that was in the West Bend News article, as recently as April 9th, if you happen to catch that article. So there's some information there. And then last in the funding part is just funding of similar populations. I want to be very careful when you look at this. This is a one-year snapshot, right? Of what they did for their funding. It's not a 10-year average, not a three-year average, it's a one-year snapshot. So again, they maybe use a lot of their funds one year and not so much the next year. So I just want to be very careful when you see that. But just to give you a different feel for how are they funding their transportation? So focus on it from that standpoint, how are they doing their funding? Not exactly how much are they funding their roadway system? Because we don't know if the Sun Prairie, how many miles of roads do they have, right? Versus what the city West Bend has, right? Every municipality's a little bit different. So again, that's just based on population, not road mileage, not condition of the roadway, nothing else, but just strictly population, and going to their, their plans and talking to their public works, you know, what they're doing and how they fund those particular projects. So again, take that as a high level, high, high level, look at what other cities are doing in similar population. So with that, we looked at and going, 11 miles of roadway in 30 years, if you have 140 miles, that means you're doing about a third of a mile a year. That gets you out to 420 years by the time you get all the mileage done. The math just doesn't work real well on that. So what we looked at was, well, what can we, you know, increase it without trying to break the bank too much? And so we looked at, and this is what the great part of the application is, when the county went through ours, we decided that that time borrowing money was, was relatively low, almost giving away borrowing at that point with the interest rates. So we looked at borrowing a larger amount at the beginning of our project to help fund it. And so what we did for this plan was just kind of amortize it out. But with this application, city staff can put a big number in, a small number in one year, and, and anything they want in between as far as funding is concerned. But what we looked at at the county level as well, if you add magically 3 and 1/2 million dollars per year, so it's adding additional 3 and 1/2 million, and it's not an easy number to look at, you do get rid of all your pazer twos and threes. And that's what you get. Get rid of your twos and threes in 30 years by adding that, that kind of funding in. You also get sewer and water work done at the same time, so it's not just about roadways, but you're also getting some of that older infrastructure raised up. So, but it also did not include any money for preventive maintenance, right? If you do put those new roadways in, you're going to want to do some kind of seal coat, fog seal, story seal, something on those roadways to actually keep them in good shape as long as you can. It's easier to keep them in a good shape if you're treating them well from the beginning. Table four shows what you're getting now with your current dollar amounts. And again, that other, when I added 3 and 1/2 million, that did not add inflation on it, that was just 3 and 1/2 million dollars per year from here to 2052, but did add inflation cost to the construction projects. So you see in table nine, you basically just a little bit over-doubled the mileage of roadway, but you more than doubled the amount of money that you're, you're putting into the system again, because of that inflationary factor going in. But you'll see that you get rid of by putting that 3 and 1/2 million extra a year, you get rid of all the twos and threes, that's right in the middle of the roadway, and you get a little bit of fours done as well. We also with that one, we took the alleys and cut those back. You do alleys in the first couple of years, take some alleys out, and then hit them back again. And later on, we'll take your alleys that are in pazer one and three, get those done in the first eight years. You'll take off about 15 years of doing alleys, and then by that time, the other ones that are good will be bad again. So we took some, some alleys out by, by doing that. And right after that, you'll see a nice map that shows what roadways you get done by increasing that funding. And table 10 goes through that, that same spreadsheet that we did before, right? Of how much money you're spending on the surface now, 60 million, now up to 151 million on the surface. Your alleys before were 17 million, you cut that in half to about eight, again, spending that money on, on asphalt and concrete. One thing we got going on then left is you'll see that there's still utilities that are going to be now maybe 120, 130 years old that you didn't get to on that map, right? Because you have so many miles of utilities that are in that condition state, and I've got the number here, and we'll put that into the spreadsheet. You currently have five miles, excuse me, 8.6 miles of utilities that are 110 years or older already. So you have about nine miles of utilities that are 110 years or older, 0.4 miles that are 100 to 110 years. And we'll put that right into your, into there. It should have been right after map 17, this next table. I apologize for not getting it in there, but this kind of shows you the age of the utilities. And we'll also do a spreadsheet of all the age of utilities after you've accomplished your plan, whichever plan you so choose. So that's out there. So it's a significant amount of utilities that you have that are, that are, that are aged in the city of West Bend. And probably the most important page is, the next page is policy decisions going forward. And I worked with, with city staff on this and actually added two more today. You have some hard decisions to make. I'm not going to snowball that, you know, going forward. You know, the very first one is, where do you place the well-maintained roadway system in your prioritization list, right? Is how, how high up is that versus everything else you have to fund? You've obviously got police, fire, public works, a lot of other stuff, parks, you know, in the city of West Bend. So where does that rank priority-wise when you start talking about funding opportunities here in a, in a city? Your sewer and water system, you saw on those maps, it's functioning pretty well when they only listed a few minor areas where they have those, those problems. But as you can imagine, as that other infrastructure ages, you have some clay pipe in the ground yet, and how's the infiltration going into those? Just, you know, how do you want those to function going forward? A big one is, what's your, your pazer rating is acceptable to you? Is a pazer three road good because it's local and it's slow traffic? Or your alley's okay because it's an alley and people aren't supposed to be going 25 miles an hour? Nothing slows down people like a pothole, I can tell you that in our county highways. You repave that roadway, they will be going faster. So just something to, to keep in mind too, that we get complaints when the road's bad, we get complaints when the road's new at the county, and I'm sure you probably get some similar reactions from your constituents as well. And then what level of funding roadway is acceptable? Is, is, is 2 million it? Is 3 million it? Is 4 million it? Is it borrowing? What kind of funding sources? And you'll see, the next one E is, what funding sources are acceptable to you? And you'll see a, a bunch of them listed out there that we mentioned earlier, a stormwater utility, a wheel tax, increasing the property tax. Are you willing to look at a transportation utilities? Are you just going to keep borrowing and using that to fund your roadway system? Are you willing to review the special assessments and how you do those going forward? Not much different than a tax, but you're taxing locals versus other potential users. Are you going to increase your funding to keep up with inflation? It's an ugly word right now, doing this, you know, when we started it back in 2018, it was like, oh yeah, we got to account for inflation. But now reality is hitting you hard in the face going, yeah, our road product costs next year, I know are going to increase significantly, and we're all hoping oil prices go down, which majorly impact asphalt prices and how you can construct a roadway. We're all hoping they go back to a couple of years ago rates. But if they don't, you know, what does that look like, you know, going forward? Again, you're funding for your sanitary sewer, which is a little separate utility, a little different, how to fund that one with state regulations versus your water utility. So you'll see that even when we increased the water and sewer a little bit in the other plan too, we didn't have to increase those too much to keep up with, with the extra money going to the roadway. And then looking at your project scope of reconstruction, when you're doing reconstruction versus an asphalt versus concrete. When you're looking at your sidewalk replacement, if you've driven down, I'm sure most of you have, Seventh Avenue, a lot of sidewalks left in place along that, right? You'd said, yep, some sidewalks are good, we're going to leave that there. It's one thing to look at, it's a, it's a great practice. And can you work within the curb and leave the curb in place in some places? Is that maybe an option as well? Back in the day, they put an asphalt surface over and filled ready to part in the curb in, right? To kind of save time, money, even, yep, we'll leave the curb there, we'll just put some asphalt in it. And yep, we lose a bit of water capacity, stormwater. You can't do it everywhere, because the water will jump over the curb, and you don't want to flood somebody out. So you've got to be careful where, where you do that kind of. But, you know, that was a fairly common practice, I'm sure, in the city of West Bend. At one time, if you look at your, your concrete curbing there, maybe lining your storm sewer, excuse me, sanitary sewer instead, instead of digging it out, is it possible to aligning? One of the communities that we looked at does a lining program every year, and they do that to hopefully save money instead of ripping up the roadway to put, put liners in. Again, it may be a cost-effective, maybe not in certain applications, but something I'm sure that your staff has probably looked at in the past. Pavement with, City Port Washington's going on what they call a road diet. When they reconstruct the roadways, sometimes you only have parking on one side. It's less to maintain, less to put a seal coat on later on, less to plow, just, again, something to think about, maybe not every road. You have certainly busier roads than others, Seventh Avenue with the Fire Department right there, Havling South, maybe not the best one, that narrow down for those larger vehicles, but maybe some other roads you could look at, thinking, well, we can get away with, you know, parking on one side only. So just something to think about. And are you willing to let your, the math kind of run the decisions for you a little bit? Instead of, and that those political pressures of local, whatever it is, of business or residents on their roadways, letting the, the math kind of do the speaking. And then the two I added today was the importance of alleys, and how important are those to you would be a, a good policy decision. And then how important is preventive maintenance to you? And what do you want that to look like going forward? Like I said, the county, we, we spent a lot of time and effort doing that, that chip seal program.[1730.26] And I was surprised when I was looking it up, the city of Madison even does a chip seal program. Where you put the tar down, a little stone chips down, the city of Madison does that within the city limits. I get yelled at when I do it out in a rural roadway, I can't imagine doing it in the city. But they do it right in the city because they know it's very cost effective. About 21,000 a mile to do that additive on there. So a fairly cost effective way to keep that asphalt in as good shape as you can for years. And then the last two pages again are the executive summary going forward, which you'll have a copy on your desk where we kind of summarize everything up into two quick pages and a map. Then at the end is appendix A again, that current plan. And if you want a list of roadways, when they're done, you'll see all the information right on there. The roads, the alleys, the Pazer ratings and all the other great information that we have available. Again, with that, we do have the, you know, the online application that is available out there that city staff has access to that we utilize. And you'll see up on your screen where you can put in the amount that you want to put in for dollar amount, the sewer and water amount, how you want to adjust for inflation, your age of threshold for utilities, how many alleys you want to do, the years again, the Pazer ratings, you just pick them all. And you just hit next and, you know, you allocate the funds. So if you want to borrow money of $10 million in 2024, you just throw a one in front of the two and you allocate the funds. And then it says, what roads are you going to do now? How, what kind of roads could you do and what does that look like? And how's it impact where we went from, I forget, 10.9 miles rolled up to 13.1, right? So you can kind of run that different cost scenarios. This is where you have the utilities tab that I mentioned earlier. Again, we'll get to make sure that this table gets in there. But it shows your total mileage, again, that 8.6 miles that are 110 years or older and not scheduled, about seven miles of that utility, they're still not scheduled in the plan. Would you see the other mileage of utilities that are scheduled? So we got that, and you got your individual roadways. So if you want to look up 10th Avenue, which year is 2029? And you certainly go to figure out which segment of 10th Avenue that's accounting for and the costs. And then the results, again, the overall from 2022 to 25 and all the data behind the scenes that you get. And then, again, we showed you that the city chose to lock certain roads together. Parts of 18th Avenue, Green Tree Road, doing segments together, again, Kilborn. So just making sure they're locked together to be done in the same year. And then again, the last part of that program is the costs. And again, we got city of Hartford costs, city of West Bend costs, town of Farmington. And Farmington and Qoscom are just, obviously you can see we just repeated Hartford summers because we don't have their final numbers in yet of what they're doing or working on those. So you'll see that, you know, going forward. So a lot of information, I'm not sure how long it took, probably too long. Certainly more than willing to answer any questions if the mayor, you know, so desires to go down that route. You can see we're nearing the finish line on our portion. We definitely have some little cleanup work to do in the document. And again, hope to have that done in the next week to two to turn it over. But that doesn't mean we're done. We'll work with city staff and work these numbers through back and forth. We did this program, this application in-house. So if we decide to add more to it or less, we certainly can. They actually added the maintenance function, which isn't in this one, but it is in our test function, so you'll see the testing. So we also have maintenance costs going forward as well. So if you want to do a maintenance program of crack filling, fog sealing, chip sealing, we can get that in there. But then also looking at getting you a program. So when you do that road in 2041, you should be, you know, chip sealing a couple of years later. One should that be chip sealed, one should be crack filled. And so again, to get that build out, right? That's the last kind of piece of the puzzle to help staff go out there and think, well, those are ones we should, you know, crack fill. And they're obviously going to go out there in spring just to look at it to make sure those are still accurate and right. But that's the piece, that last recurring maintenance is the last piece of the puzzle that we're working on. And staff was working on it very hard today. You can see it's somewhat up and running, but I got to make sure to do some final testing on it before we make it go live. But that'll help staff too, going, which ones should we do and how should we do it? And that's where that $400,000 mark will, there'll be another column in there of just ongoing maintenance costs for stuff like road painting and stuff like that. And put that in there. And if they want to add it in by year, we can certainly add that in too so that they can just spit out the program going, this is the ones we should paint this year. This one should crack fill, these ones we should chip seal. You know, that's the kind of data we want to make sure we give to not just the city of West Bend, but all the local municipalities to make it a little bit easier. But they still have to have an eye to it. There's still going to be changes going forward. But at least gives me a really good starting point. And more importantly, having that discussion at your level now going forward going, all right, we see it, we, you probably all know, you probably have an issue already. If you've driven around, I'm sure you all realize it, that, yep, you look at it going, yeah, we probably could do a little bit better. And now you got some data behind the scenes too to look at that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back over. Oh, I'm sorry, Chairman John, I forgot, Public Works, my apologies.
Thank you, Scott. But I do have a question. You brought up chip sealing in Madison. What is the guarantee or the length of chip sealing? I know the city of West Bend at one time did do chip sealing. What does, what would be the length of chip sealing?
On a city street, I'm guessing 10 to 15 years, maybe even longer. A county highway, we go seven to 10 between them. But we get a little more heavier traffic volumes and our plows are going a lot faster and kind of hitting the stones a little quicker and wearing them down a little faster. Most likely, your plows are not going 40 miles an hour, 35 to 40. My guess is yours are going much slower and probably not as much impact on them. I hope, Doug, they're going slower than ours. And so I'm guessing you're probably going to get a lot more life out of your chip seal than we do at the county.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Allen.
You talk about mileage, is that lane miles?
Centerline, centerline lane miles, yes.
Centerline lane miles. So if you had two traffic lanes and two parking lanes, a mile of that roadway would be four miles? Or two miles?
No, a mile is a mile.
A mile is a mile?
Centerline miles, yes.
How does that?
That's why your cost is so high kind of per square foot versus like, you saw Hartford's was narrow at 600 years or 900 because your roads are typically a little wider. Again, it's just kind of an average cost. So it's centerline miles of roadway. So you have 140 centerline miles. So I'll pick on Main Street rail frontier, it's got basically five lanes, right? You got two lanes and a center lane. But if you go down Main Street, that's one mile, if you go from one end to the other, about a mile of centerline road. We could break it down by lanes if you wanted to, but then we'd have to get the data from the city to figure out where all that, where the legislature lanes are and stuff like that.
It would seem as though it would be easier to model the financial impact of a specific piece of road if you dealt with everything in terms of lane miles.
For us, it was easier with centerline miles.
Okay, all right. Alderman Berquist?
Scott, on map three, traffic volumes. It says that the source is city of West Bend, Wisconsin Department of Transportation in Washington County. Do you know what the date is on those statistics?
City of West Bend's date would be, excuse me, the state of Wisconsin did theirs in 2019, their last data going forward. City of West Bend was just kind of more or less an estimate of what the traffic volumes were.
But they're pretty current as far as the numbers go?
Yeah, the state's are 2019. And what happens is when you do that Pazer rating, that you have to put in a traffic volume with it. And so some of the roads maybe didn't have one, so we asked the city what those words were. So I think Max just uses best engineering estimate to figure those out.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Model?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot for doing this, man. This tool, the last time you guys presented this, it kind of amazed me. And this looks like this had to have been a ton of work. Earlier in your presentation, you were talking about percentage of a couple of different cities relative to ours.
Yep.
Being like way out of whack, was it like 2% to 5% Hartford or Jackson to our 14% or something like that? Did I misunderstand that?
I'll bring it up for you. So this should look, you know, familiar with you looking at. This is the city of West Bend, where you can see on the far right-hand side, you've got the two is 4.7 and three is 15%. So you add those two together, the 4.6, excuse me, to 10 adds up to 15, okay? So the far right column is cumulative, so 15% of your roads are three or less. That makes sense? So then you go down to Hartford's data, 3.4% of their roads are three or less. So again, three, so we got 3% are at three and .3. Hopefully I said the right numbers earlier. But basically what amounts to is about 2.2 miles, 2.4 miles, excuse me, are in Hartford. And then in Qoscom, they only have 1% of their roadways are in three or less. And I can share this with you, I know I shared it with the mayor earlier. Just kind of give a feel for it. Again, it's a small sample size, remember, it's only two other communities, right?
Yeah, I know.
It's not including the Village of Slinger, it's not including Jackson yet, right? It's not including Newburgh, it's a small sample size. And we look at statewide. Again, I did not run the same thing for the comparable populations of what they look like. We didn't, we have to ask them for their data and we didn't ask them for their data. We could if that's something that you think would be important to look at those. But we just happened to look at the other ones going, all right, are we going to have the same kind of issue in Qoscom and Hartford?
Yeah, it's not a race, it's all good. I was just kind of stunned by that a little bit. Thank you.
Sure.
Jed, Delmy?
Actually, I had some questions for Max.
Good evening.
Hi, Max. Max, if we're currently spending 2 million a year on roadways, do you remember what we used to be, not spending, borrowing? Do you recall what we used to borrow?
I do not have the numbers with me, but I believe it was higher than that. It was, because we were borrowing for specific projects along the way. And so each year it was a different number. If I'm going to guess, I'm going to say four, four and a half, maybe, depending on the year.
Okay. And you and I recently spoke about Locust Street.
Yes.
And, you know, the Locust is in the five-year plan.
Yes.
It's not here until another 20 years from now. So there is some difference between the list of projects in here compared to what we have in the five-year plan, I take it?
Yes. And in my email to you, I mentioned that the plan that we have right now is the plan that we've been working with. We have a list of priority of streets. And then the way we've been working is that we know we have this budget of 2 million and we're going to do maybe a couple of streets, three streets next year. So we subtract the estimated cost of those streets from the 2 million. And then with what's left, after we did pavement marking, curb and gutter replacement in some areas, et cetera, then we look at what other segment of streets. We could do the example of Locust, for example, you know, it's a street that is like almost a cul-de-sac. And so it's a smaller street with less traffic. We know we don't have utilities there, so the cost is going to be less. So we plan on using the leftover budget from that year after we do all the reconstruction. And we would do that street. And if you look at the five-year plan, you will see that every year we have small segments of streets like this where we try to fit them in to use leftover money from the budget once we have planned the big streets. And so that's how it fits. And sometimes, as I was pointing out too, something comes up, like this year we had the opportunity to do Roscoe and Water using the 2022 bill funding. And so that's going to impact our budget next year and things can move then because that little space that we had to fit another street maybe be eaten up by Roscoe or Water. So, and that's why in my email I said, right now, the plan as it is published on the city website shows this, but as we go through, it might change. We still try to do the big streets with the utilities. And then depending on the funding, the bid numbers, et cetera, we may or may not be able to fit other streets without utilities. I will finish by saying that there was one year where we had great numbers and we ended up having a large amount of money. And then what we did is repave Schmidt Road from Creek to Barton. Because at that point, it was like we had extremely good bids and we had a bigger leftover money, if you want, remaining. And so we were able to do that project. So that's a little bit how it works. And we put those small segments in the five-year plan because we know they need to be addressed and they can fit in certain areas.
Okay. And for any of my constituents, I'm not giving special attention to Locust, just came up. And I was confused about the five-year because I know that Kilborn Avenue is in my district and it's really bad. So I'm not ignoring Kilborn if anyone's watching, and we all have streets like Kilborn in our districts. And the only other thing I was going to say, and Scott, you don't have to say a word about this, but the county is getting $15 million in sales tax revenue this year, according to their budget. We'll not share it with any of the municipalities. And I'm sure the city of West Bend is responsible for a chunk of that 15 million. And we could use that money to help our streets, but we can't get any of it from Washington County.
Anyone else? Chris, you have anything to add?
Sure, thanks, Jen. Well, first off, thank you, thank you, Scott, thank you to the county team, thank you, Max, Doug. I know there's a lot of people that worked really hard on this project over the last year or so. I think it's pretty obvious to us that, and I know a lot of us have served on the council for quite a while, that we've done a really good job at tightening our belts over the last decade and for a good reason. We just saw a report about our debt, you know, a meeting or two ago, how stable and positive that that balance was as we've been lowering our debt. But I do recognize that the same thing that everybody else recognizes is that we need to find some solutions to help fund this problem. So I think with that, the number one complaint that we get from our residents is our roads. So I guess I would like to propose to Public Works Council, and it can come back to us to discuss, that we truly get a true pulse of where our residents are at by taking advantage of a high turnout election in November and taking a look at some sort of referendum. I don't know what it would look like, but I would propose it be a cash on hand referendum where we ask the taxpayers flat out, are you okay with us collecting X in order to generate that amount of monies and then dedicate that money just towards roads? And again, we hear our residents, you know, say time, time again, how important is that increased road spending is. Well, this is their opportunity for them to tell us if they're willing to pay a little bit more for that. And if they're not, that's fine, they have the right to make that opinion heard. But if so, then we net that many more dollars that we can put and dedicate towards roads. I know I did chat a little bit with Alderman Model and Butchlick about that scenario, and I know that they were pretty positive. But I think that's just a real topic that we should discuss fairly soon, considering the November election is going to come sooner than we know it. So I guess I'll, those are my comments and I'll pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, and I totally agree. I know my phone is ringing off the hook, email's coming, the same thing. What are you going to do about the roads? The roads are atrocious. And I agree, I think it's time to have the people speak if they want to. They need to come up with the money and help get these roads back in shape. And it'll be up to the public to make a decision on this, and I totally agree with them, 100% in favor. And as a board of Public Works, I would like to recommend to the council that they take a look at this. Anybody else? All right, Scott, thank you very much. Great job. I appreciate it. Okay, being no further business, before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first being the approval of the minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, June 11th, 2022, 6:25 PM.
Motion to approve.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda for, agenda item for consideration is a resolution accepting donations from ALPLA Company and their employees for smoke alarm program. This will be discussed by Chief Kudak.
Good evening. You have before resolution accepted donation from OPLA Company. They are out in the industrial park. We periodically do site inspections and tours. And while we were there, the company employees took up a collection for us. And with the help of the parent company itself, had a $500 donation for us. And that money is being used to purchase CO detectors for our smoke detector program. So what a great opportunity and great job by them of a corporate and community partnership that we have with them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Chief Kudak, again, as an item for- And Chief Kudick, again, as an item for—agenda item for consideration, number three, resolution accepting donations for smoke alarm program.
Yes, Mr. Rubenzer donated $25 for that same program. He did receive smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors through our program, and he was grateful for that. And he donated $25 to keep the program going.
Motion to approve. And I'd like to thank both ALPLA and—I didn't catch his name. Mr. Menzer?
Rubenzer.
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 I think.
Second.
Got a motion, do we get a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
If I could just have one minute, just—I wanted to update you on the smoke detector program. In the past year, we've installed 144 smoke alarms and 22 carbon dioxide detectors. Those detectors came from donations from Red Cross, Professional Firefighters of Wisconsin, Our Saviors Lutheran Church, State Farm Insurance Grant, Home Depot, and again, other private donations. But what a great program. 144 smoke detectors, those I've replaced. Captain Haslam gave me one today. It was—I bet you 30 years old, had no batteries in it. So you can figure out, those households are now safe because of this program. Three out of five deaths that occur due to fire are in homes that don't have smoke detectors in. So that's an amazing number. And Captain Haslam is doing a phenomenal job in getting that program going and keeping it going. So thanks to him, and thanks to you for accepting those donations.
Awesome. Thanks, Chief Kudick, and thanks for doing that program. And I thank you to ALPLA Company and Mr. Rubenzer for your donations. And with no further business before the committee, adjourned by the call of the chair.
Thank you, Alderman Model. Now, I'll call back to order the City of West Bend Council meeting. We're on number five, the last of our presentations, the 2023 City of West Bend Budget Discussion by our State Administrator Jay Chambeau.
Good evening, everyone. It'll take a second for the PowerPoint to fire up. Start by discussing the 2023 budget and reminding the council that this is probably—you have lots of tough decisions that are before you on any annual basis, but the one that is the most significant, biggest impact of all of the decisions that you get to make on an annual basis, adopting an annual budget, planning for a five-year CIP, ranks right up there as one of the greatest. I'll say that. Budget goals for 2023. Maintain our current level of services. We're not looking to reduce services in any program areas. Continue to implement the Fire Department Analysis Plan. You're currently working through a task force led by Alderman Kaler meeting to discuss that implementation, whether that means new fire stations, additional firefighters, whether we receive the grant or not. And I will share with you that Chief Kudick is creating his budget with nine additional firefighters in it. So hopefully, we receive the grant. But if we don't, the indication by this body has been that we are prepared to add nine full-time firefighters. Obviously, we have a chance to review that and continue to discuss it, but we are creating that budget with nine additional firefighters included in it. As far as station changes and modifications, I think we're—you know, we're still in the process of that study and discussing a best, most optimal location for a relocated Station One. Those things aren't going to happen overnight, but the addition of staff has been discussed for some time, and it will be at least proposed in the initial 2023 operating budget. Streamline the department functions. With any change in department heads, we continue to pick away at things that we can do better, stronger, faster within our own annual daily processes. And we have some new department heads that are recommending some new things. And just again, streamlining most stuff that you wouldn't see and doesn't have a dollar amount, but if it makes the life of city staff more efficient and faster, it's worth implementing. So we're going to knock off some of those within this budget and have that as a goal. Also utilize an appropriate amount of net new construction. We don't have much capacity left in the five-year net new construction formula, but we do have a little bit of capacity, possibility of looking back and using that. I guess it's probably too soon to say. But as the net new construction numbers become available for 2023, we'll certainly recommend—and again, I list it as an appropriate amount. I don't know what that number is yet. We are still building all of the department-level budgets. And then this next bullet is one that goes along hand-in-hand with the previous bullet, a sensible tax rate increase. I know that tax rate is a sensitive topic for constituents, for you folks as aldermen and mayor who have to make the decision regarding the budget implementation. But we've been adding costs, and inflation has gone up. And there are items that will just likely result in a tax rate increase. So I wanted to hit that head-on as a budget goal to create in a sensible, well-thought-out and professional-recommended manner, but one that you should know is not likely to be a tax rate decrease for 2023 or a flat rate, and will likely be a tax rate increase. We do have the addition of the planner. You can see that bullet—two bullets down. The Development Department, that's been in our five-year plan, our five-year financial plan for some time. And that will cost additional dollars for the 2023 budget. That's not in 2022. This body took action recently to add a records clerk within PD. Again, another budgeted—unbudgeted item for 2022 that will likely increase overall costs in 2023. So the tax rate increase is just a realization that that's likely to occur and be recommended to you in this year's budget. Continue to implement the compensation plan. I do have the merit increase as two-plus-one, recommending a 3% increase at 1-1 of 2023 for all staff that meet that merit requirement. We don't have a bunch of employees within the city that are on performance improvement plans. We anticipate the bulk of them being recommended for the full 3%. That—to—the reason I listed as two-plus-one, it's not a 2% in January 1st and another 1% July 1st that some municipalities creatively do. I'm listing it that way to recognize that we are lifting the—recommending lifting the existing compensation plan that was adopted by this body in 2022 for 2023. So the plan is set for 2022, and then 2% would be added to all of the columns. It would move all of the columns, all of the individuals within those columns up to two—up additional 2%. That was a flaw in our previous compensation plan that was adopted in 2013. We did not do that. We left that plan at 2013 rates. And trying to hire employees at 2013 rates in 2020, it just proved to be unsuccessful. So keeping this plan at least in part up to speed is something that was recommended in the study and one that we're looking to accomplish within this 2023 budget. I do have additional recommendations within the budget for that compensation plan implementation. So the 3% is the baseline for all employees. If you recall, we moved a lot of employees, tenured employees here within the City of West Bend at a minimum start rate. And the plan recommended further increasing them through the next three years at a percent and a percent and a half. And the budgets are being built with that additional increase for all employees that have been here five years or more and that are below—or at the minimum, below the market rate. Depending on how far below, they'll be recommended at an additional 1% to 1.5%. So some employees will receive 3% increase cost of living for 2023. Some will receive 4%, and some will receive 4.5% based on, again, further implementing that plan. We'll continue to pursue the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. Really proud of the work that our finance department and all departments that build their budget for—not just to receive award for attaboys and accolades, but for recognizing that this is a well-run organization and professionally-run organization, and one that's done in the highest level regarding finance. Challenges ahead of us. There are always challenges for every annual budget. I list out four of them. Three of them are probably ones we've seen and talked about a lot in the past. The dark store issue is something that we've continued to discuss. Capital Improvement Plan typically makes this list. I do list city-street utility infrastructure, following Scott. That should be no surprise to anyone here. And then added, the aging city facilities. We have all of our buildings within the city system that are not in that 10 rating that Scott mentioned for roads, but ones that have been with us for a long time. West Bend Mutual is not likely to move out of their facility that we can jump into that one anytime soon, like we did with this one back in 1991. So there are challenges ahead of us for aging facilities, fire station here, parks, facilities, certainly DPW and utility as well. And then TID, trying to keep the TID off the levy, something that we've made some strides to. We'll talk about that in a little more detail. The city infrastructure, trying to implement that sustainability plan that you just heard from the county this evening, what that exactly looks like. I think more discussion will need to take place. But we will likely, at least in the short term, be able to take a crack at implementing it a little bit if we apply some ARPA funding applications. Scott mentioned that we have $3.3 million available to us. If we're able to use three-point—some of that $3.3 million towards a implementation plan or part of the plan for sustainability, that'll be a step in the right direction. We have not earmarked any of those dollars to date, and you would have to earmark those dollars to date. So they would—the recommendation would come through city staff to you all as a body. We've discussed using it for the Riverwalk pretty strongly until we were successful in receiving the Neighborhood Investment Grant. Very thankful for that, freeing up those funds for future conversations, one of which is this top bullet. The Fire Department Analysis Implementation, talked about that a little bit. There are some modifications that are being recommended to two of the stations and then a relocation of Station One. Public Works, Library already talked about that, building maintenance. Some of our aging buildings just need some attention. I list water and sewer utility as special projects. We've talked through the PFAS situation. We do have well four that's been taken offline. Our utility department is working through a study with the engineers that they work with to try to find the best solution to get that well back up and running and how we can clean the PFAS out of the water before it goes back in. Happy to report that we are providing clean, safe water to our constituents at this time. There is no concern regarding elevated PFAS numbers above any standards. But we do want to get those—that well, long-term, up and back into the system. It is a high-producing well for us and will be a costly project. Similarly, for sewer, we've been talking about phosphorus the entire six-year time I've been here. And that phosphorus reduction project is coming soon. We're in the process of planning for it, studying it right now. Two, again, higher-cost projects that are looming in both utilities. The dark store issue is one that's gotten a little better. In 2022, the Menards lawsuit has settled, as you all know. Thankfully, because of the—in part, because of the building expansion that they wanted to do, they dropped their lawsuit against us for several years. We do have a multi-year challenge from Walmart, a significant difference of opinion as to the value of their property, one that will likely hinge—if you fast-forward to the bottom bullet there on a Supreme Court decision that's coming likely yet this year. So we're anticipating a decision. It's a challenge of an appellate court case that ruled in favor of the municipality. If the Supreme Court upholds that, we're—we're very confident that the Walmart challenge and some of the other ones will go in favor of the City of West Bend. If the Supreme Court goes the other way on that decision, that could be not-so-great news for us financially and many other municipalities throughout the state. Stay tuned on that. We're working closely with our attorney, Amy Seibel, on that whole topic. I mentioned the Capital Improvement Plan. It's one that our staff is working through right now. Department heads are meeting and discussing priorities for 2023. We have, for the last few years, spent $2 million or borrowed $2 million on roads, reconstruction, and maintenance, and an additional $1 million for all of the other departments to compete for—for police and Public Works and Parks. All of—Library, all of the other—all of the other departments have to compete for that $1 million. And it gets two critical conversations at times, but certainly ones that the department heads take seriously and work with each other to prioritize and come with a solid recommendation. I do list ARPA funding again here. I think there's a solid chance that you'll see a recommendation for the 2023 CIP budget coming above the $3 million. So with a typical $3 million borrowing, with an addition of some ARPA funding attached to that, so we can knock out some additional projects in the coming year. So stay tuned for that as we continue to build that. I'm hopeful to bring that budget to you in advance of the operation budget, like we do on—try to do on an annual basis. And then just continue to pursue funding options. We're always on the alert for grants and other opportunities for funds that we can shake loose. The caution for that is it puts a significant amount of work on our staff when that happens. So the Rusko Road and Water Street grant that we received is great news for the City of West Bend, getting those roads done in advance of any other five-year plan that we might be able to knock out. Puts a lot of load on Max and Mitch from Kunkel, our contracted engineers. Not work that they can't get done, but just—I say that because a lot of times, we ask for things, and we ask for them now from city staff when we're looking for information or a project to get completed. And when we insert those two projects that have an August 1 deadline, it just creates kind of a mess for them and a reprioritization of other items that they're currently working on. And then just continue to prioritize the needs and wants for the city organization as a whole. We're fortunate that we don't have significant amount of TID on levy anymore. Rewind, five and 10 years ago, we had significant upside-down TIDS. We've been able to grow our way out of them. TID 11 did jump on the levy last year. We have a couple of TIDS that are in a very small way still on our levy, but for the most part, we're in the next bullet discussion of how much levy—general fund levy repayment are we going to be doing on an annual basis? We paid off the water utility from the TID, and the sewer utility repayment is scheduled for the next few years as well. General fund repayment will continue for seven-plus years within the city organization, as those TIDS become successful. We hadn't created a TID in about 10 years and created two of them consecutively in the last two years. TID 14 was created in 2021, TID 15 in 20—I'm sorry, TID 14 in 2020, TID 15 in 2021. And the possibility of the creation of TID 16 yet later this year or early 2023, that's a good problem to have, that we have development proposals that are coming to us and continuing to be moving the city forward. Just—I guess, stay tuned for that. But that is a—if it's recommended to be created, would be a pay-as-you-go TID as well. And then developer shortfall payments. We have two significant developer payments within our TID structures that they've paid in upwards of $4 million to us to cover their shortfalls over the TID life. And we have projections that start showing those payments coming back, the TID health. And you guys see this on an annual basis as we go through the TID reports, that they're starting to go back to—will be starting to go back to the developer in one case very soon, and in one case, in about five years after we pay off our debt. Next steps. 2023 budgets are being created at this time by the department heads of budget staff within their respective budgets. I already talked about the five-year Capital Improvement Plan. I'm trying to work with Ellers as to nailing down a date that they're available in either August or September. Health insurance premiums. I can report some good news regarding 2023 budgets. The changes that we made in 2022 after the health insurance task force had a chance to study and make some recommendations last year have worked, and our costs have leveled or settled, if you will. And our insurance provider is not recommending a premium increase for 2023. So that's really good news for budgeting for 2023. And beyond, hopefully, it stays the same as well. And then the two presentations that are included here, the August 3, and then the—we added the August 10 a couple of years ago for that special finance budget meeting. I will send you, at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, these slides, and also send them out to the department heads after tonight's meeting. But I wanted to buzz through them with you first. But I wanted to buzz through them with you first, answer any questions that you might have, and let you know that your staff is working hard to create the 2023 budget.
Thanks so much. I'll open up. If there's any questions, hold them in, Alan.
If you can go back to the last slide, you said August 3 and August 10. You meant October 3 and October 10.
I did mean that, yes.
Oh, okay.
August 1st and the 15th are our August meetings.
Alderman, Kayla.
If I recall, Jay, we had talked about this earlier, getting this info a little sooner. October 3 is when we're going to see the presentation. Then we are expected then on the 10th to vote. Is that correct?
No, August 10 is the date that the Finance Committee, the last couple of years, we tried to do a roundtable and talk and invite all the department heads and flip through budget by budget to go in a more thorough review, not a line item by line item review, but a more thorough, high-level review of all of the highlights within respective departments. And then you'd be asked to act on the budget in November. So you'd have a month from October 10 before action.
All right. When do we then also see, we had, what's been removed?
You would see that October 3.
Okay, so we'll see what everybody has proposed and what's been pulled out of the budget before. In years past, we were only seeing, okay, here's what the, just Fire Department's budget was, and we didn't see what they had actually requested. So I want to make sure we see what's requested and what is budgeted so that we know what's removed.
Yep, that's a page that's right in the budget.
Thanks. Alderman Dolik.
Jay, if we don't get that grant for the firefighters, which would be bad, but if, are we able to put that in the budget on our own without bumping into levy limit and exponential restraint? Would we need to go to a referendum?
Great question, no. We believe that there is capacity within the levy limit formula based on retired debt over the years that would allow it. When Phil is here in August or September, I'll have him hit that question head-on as to process-wise, but it is a question that I've asked him in the past. It would, if we don't receive the grant and we add nine firefighters, it would add about $1, $1.10 to the levy rate.
So it'd still be a significant policy decision for this council to approve.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I see another hand up over here. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
It's dead.
And with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda consisting of items 6, 7, and 8.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I'll give that to Kayla and Alan. And discussion on these items. Hearing none, all those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have a public hearing, a public hearing regarding weights and measures assessments. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this item, feel free to come on up. Well, got any takers?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Model and Dolik. All those in favor of any public hearings, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And moving on to a genime for consideration. Number two, a final resolution for the living and collecting assessment under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023, weights and measure inspections performed by the State of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection and pursuant to Municipal Code Section 12.26.
Second.
Thank you, Kayla and Alan. Any questions on this exciting item? Then all those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, request by Habitat for Humanity to close and use the city-owned Walnut Street parking lot and various city streets for German Fest, August 25 through 28, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Kayla and Alan. Same request as I have every year. Any questions on this? Then all those in favor granting that request, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number four, approval of a memorandum of understanding for Bird Rides Inc. is coming back to us after we made that ordinance change. Can you have anybody just do a summary for us? Otherwise, yep. Go ahead.
I can do that. We've had continued conversations with Bird, Michael Cavato, and I'm not sure if the other gentleman is online or not. Is it Michael?
Yep.
Okay. Michael is available by WebEx, and you can ask any questions that you might have. Ian drafted this MOU, worked with Michael on it, and he has pre-signed it, so you see it in your packet as signed. You see the ordinance again in your packet. And I know Chief Daring is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding enforcement and how the Police Department is prepared to handle bird scooters. I'll let Michael speak for himself, but he did share with city staff that they were prepared, if this was met your approval, they were prepared to add them potentially to the city of West Bend yet this year.
Sounds great. Michael, are you on the phone? Can you hear us?
I can. Thank you very much for having me this evening, members of council.
Yeah, thanks for calling in. Do you have any comments or summary on the MOU that's before us?
Only to say that we've been working extensively with city staff to craft this. I think it addresses all the concerns that were raised originally in combination with the ordinance. I feel very comfortable with it. I hope that the city feels very comfortable with it as well, and that we are quite excited to potentially partner with the city of West Bend here.
Thanks, sir. All to the council. I guess I'll ask for a motion first.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Alan, and then Alderman, Bush, I guess I saw your hand up.
Yeah, Michael, I have a question regarding the age 18. How do you go about kind of preventing anyone under the age of 18 using scooters downtown?
Excellent question. We have a number of different avenues at our disposal. First and foremost, there is simply a user agreement that users have to go through, similar to what you'd see with any other technology company. We also do a credit card verification, which is something that most people under the age of 18 do not have. Finally, if necessary, we can actually do an ID verification, meaning requiring our users to scan their photo identification. However, that does tend to discriminate against some disadvantaged communities, which is why we typically do it on a campaign basis, meaning we'll turn it on for two weeks, turn it back off so that individuals can still utilize it, as that tends to filter out most of the individuals who might not be of age.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Yep, Alderman, Kayla.
Chief. Got any concerns?
Thank you. Well, it's certainly not a lot. Coming to stand in the way of technology, I think I've made my stance fairly clear. I had two, and remain having two main concerns, and actually, the first one has been answered by our ordinance, and that was equal enforcement of the law. I wanted to make sure that there was no special privilege granted to the rental scooters, and our ordinance does address that. They'll be handled as, there's electric scooters out on our roadways right now. Obviously, by bringing Bird in, there'll be more of them. But we're good at enforcing our ordinances. We're good at bicycles, skateboards, rollerblades, and now scooters. So I think our ordinance addresses that, especially now that we've made sure that no scooters on the sidewalks in the downtown and Barton District. Actually, Jess and I have been working on, Jess has been working on signage, so we're very clear in the downtown area that'll be posted and actually very shortly. And then the second one, which does remain, is I am concerned with the scooters being left on private property, on citizens, you know, their front lawns or businesses and those things, but that's a common occurrence in all of those. And I note that in the MOU, the Bird scooter, or whoever we would, would hold them to the ordinance, and that's been addressed in the ordinance, that within three hours, they'll be picked up between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM and before 8:00 AM for any notice received between 7:00 and 6:00. We were assured by Bird that they hold to that, that it's in their best business model interest to hold to that. I'll say that, being a police officer, I like to make sure we have an enforcement hand to make sure that the sales pitch is also agreed with. And that the suspension revocation of license provision in our ordinance, I think, is very clearly aimed at. If they're not going to abide by the contract, we have an arm to make sure that they do. So trust but verify, I guess, right? Let's hope that the, not hope, I believe the company will abide by it. I know that from other communities that we've talked to, it really is dependent on the staff that they have, the person that, or people who are going to be committed to this area to guide, just like our experience with everything. Businesses that have a great manager, that's community-minded, that wants to partner with us, we have no problems with apartment complexes that have great managers. If you remember Robert Gilbert, Brett, we always worked very well with him down at Arbitrace, and we had no problems there when he was committed to it, and we'll hope that Bird does the same, but like the fact that we can hold that license over a suspension, make sure. That's the cop in me.
May I answer your questions? Good. Alderman Dolik.
Couple of things. Paragraph two of the MOU seems to contradict the city code because the city code allows electric scooters on sidewalks, except in the two business districts. But the MOU says, shall be governed by the rules applying to bicycles, fine, but then are to be ridden on streets, which is a contradiction within that sentence. So I'm confused by that. And the rest of that whole paragraph is talking about streets and bike lanes and bike paths. But again, our city code says these things can be on sidewalks. The other question I have, and Mike may not be, Michael from Bird may not like this, but, and I didn't know that the city attorney wouldn't be here tonight. I did email him about this. The top of the MOU says, "The agreement will renew for subsequent 12-month terms following this date," that is December 31st, "unless terminated in keeping with the provisions below," further down. I personally, I don't know if we can amend the MOU since there's an agreement. I'd like to have that sentence removed. I'd like this to sunset the end of the year. I'd like them to reapply. Now, let me add, by the way, originally, I was very skeptical of this because these ridiculous scooters, I'm willing to go along with this to see how it goes, okay? But I'd like this sentence, I'd like them to have to come back because before we reconsider them, I'd like the Police Department and/or Public Works, if they're going to get involved, but certainly the Police Department, to have time to get back to us with a report on how much time they had to spend chasing down these scooters, whether they ended up in the river or if they were abandoned, how many had to be impounded, how much time was spent. I don't think that's too onerous on the PD, but it would be very helpful to us to see what the burden on the city was before we allow this to, before we do this again.
I don't disagree. I must have misread that part. I saw that, but I misunderstood it, I guess. We could amend to change that based on my motion.
Any other thoughts? I want to say. Yep.
I agree with Jed totally. I was going to mention the same thing, that we need to look back at this and include the Police Department regarding any issues that are causing more problems for you down the road, and if we have concerns and stuff, I definitely think we need to review this and take a good look at it. Totally agree.
Hold on, Mal.
Mr. Bird, is it acceptable to have this sunset and then renew again after the 1st of the year? Would this be a showstopper if this were amended in this manner? Mr. Bird, are you still there?
Michael, are you still there?
Yes, I am still here. I apologize. I seem to be having some technical difficulties as some of the comments came in a little garbled. I believe I heard that there was some discussion about removing the auto renewal from within the agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So with the auto renewal, there is still the termination language, so we can remove, or the city can choose to remove the, or rescind the MOU at any point in time. What I would say is, given the limited amount of seasonality that we have here for deployment within West Bend with the expected winter that, or snow that we'll see within the winter, from a business perspective, it would be extremely challenging for us to go through this process a second time without having a more certain future with the ability to potentially start next year. So what I would say is, hopefully, council can accept that the termination language affords the exact same kind of controls that they're looking for, while still gives us the ability to at least have some confidence in knowing that we can extend this beyond a few months.
If we keep this automatic renewal in, then we would have to depend upon city staff to put this on a common council agenda in time. So I don't have a problem with that as long as, you know, that happens, okay?
We're just looking for the council to have the ability to discuss this from time to time once a year.
Yeah.
And potentially change things or terminate, yeah.
And we would have to do it, what was, what was it, 30 days? So we would, Michael, when does your season start next year, do you think?
It'll really be dependent on the weather. If there are some unseasonably warm days, it could start as early as March, but more likely, it'll be sometime around mid to late April, just based off what we've seen historically within the region, possibly even May.
So we could look at it in January or February safely? Okay.
Yeah.
We stay with the original motion and just direct city staff to, okay.
I'm sure if it really is as big of a headache, I would trust that you guys would come back to us, for sure. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns?
I'm just looking at number seven on the bottom, hours of operation, 4:00 AM to midnight. Do these scooters have any sort of lighting system on them that, I mean, after, you know, let's say it's October, 7:30, it's dark outside, visibility-wise. I'm just thinking of, you know, younger drivers, any driver for that matter. Are we going to be able to see these things as early as 4:00 AM in the morning and midnight in the evening?
Excellent question. Every single scooter is equipped with a headlight, taillight, running lights, and brake lights to have increased visibility. On some of our models, we also include reflectors on certain areas. I should say, on most of our models, we also include reflectors on certain areas to ensure that they are as visible as possible.
Okay, perfect.
Right. Any else? And we do have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the MOU as presented, so I'll call for votes. So all those in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Duly noted, and that passes. Thanks so much, Michael.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time this evening.
And we'll move on to reports. A report by Alderman Berquist regarding the Library Board meeting held on September 19 of this year.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on July 19. I was impressed for the meeting, but reviewed the video so that I could give you this presentation. After the monthly business of the board, they received a presentation from FEH, which was an architectural design firm. The presentation was an introduction of the firm, who specializes in library evaluations, design, and renovations. Remember that the building is over 20 years old and has needs in both space requirements and renovations. No board action was taken, as this was just a presentation of the firm's capabilities. The director's report spoke of 2023 budgeting issues to include capital improvement needs. Steve also gave the June statistics, which included 19,126 patron visits, 40,452 items were checked out, there were 279 new library cards issued, and 3,495 patrons attended some sort of programming at the library during the month of June. He added that the library is on track to surpass the circulation of the MEED library. You've heard me in the past talk about the MEED library in Sheboygan. That's the System Resource Library that everyone compares themselves to. So the fact that we're up there is good news. The board president discussed the trustee training assignment for the month, which was on strategic planning, as outlined in the Trustee Essentials Handbook, Chapter 11. There was a need identified to change the bylaws to accommodate the posting of agendas. Members were asked to review the bylaws in general, and any changes identified would need to be submitted prior to the next meeting for any action to be taken. Plus, the board authorized Steve to attend the Leadership West Bend program this next year, after not being able to attend last year. I guess the program is very popular, and seats fill up fast. I guess the program is very popular and seats fill up fast, and we missed out last year, so we're trying to get on, on board early this year. Agenda items acted on included setting a date and time to conduct training with Paul Robach. This training was scheduled for August 10th at 5:30 PM. Board members were advised that the sprinkler funds had been transferred and review of the fund balance on the agenda was postponed until the next meeting. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for August 16th at 5:15. That's a time change, if you noticed, because to better accommodate members' schedules, we found that there was some issues with the time that we started, so we changed the time, the start time, and that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, as always, Alderman Berquist. And with that, we'll move on to our closed session item, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, pair 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, the body, has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility for evaluation of city administrator.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Alan, and if we could please have a roll call vote.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Kohler.
Aye.
Alderman Dolik.
Aye.
Alderman Aaronz.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
And Alderman Zinkheim.
Aye.
Thank you. We will be going in closed session and adjourning from closed session, so open up, is there any announcements for the good of the order? Yes, sir.
City clerk can obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in-person absentee balloting starts tomorrow at City Hall. This is your chance to exercise your franchise and meet the new city clerk. So I encourage you to in-person absentee ballot here at City Hall.
Yes, from 8 to 4:30, July, starting tomorrow, August 4th, and then August 5th is our last day, from 8 to 5, so an extra 30 minutes.
Great. Any other comments? Thank you, and we're going to closed session. Have a good night.